We convene our, um, our meeting, public meeting for tonight. And would you please stand for the badge? Ready to begin?
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a report on a closed session this evening. In closed session by a vote five to zero with board action to appoint Chad Mayberry as Director of Assessment and Accountability affecting July 1st, 2018. Have a motion to adopt a candidate, please. Someone, second. Are there changes or additions to the agenda?
There's, uh, no, there's changes and also just clarifications. So on, uh, item 12M, which is the agreement with the Los Angeles Department of Education to pay, the summary discussed in numbers is all aligned with the contract. And essentially what it is, is we received additional funds from the state of California in the addition of fifteen thou- little over fifteen thousand dollars spread over three years. The contract reflects the, this next year's contract with the additional funds in it. So that's why the numbers don't match. But essentially, all the numbers are accurate, they just don't make sense unless you have the content. That's a three-year grant, total grant's gonna be upwards of sixty thousand dollars. So we did get an increase, so we're, that's reflected in the amount of that approved in the contract.
How do the two amounts can see a difference?
The amount in the contract is accurate, it's twenty-two thousand dollars. The, it's the old amount, um, which is the addition of the new money that have come in, that's about twenty-two thousand. And then the other one, um, is on actually item 17, uh, the top of the world instructional minutes weren't a hundred percent accurate. We fixed that, it's appreciated. So it's probably, didn't get to be totally correct in time. So she, uh, we move forward and we have accurate, you come up as answers. So it's, we're going on the accurate structure, that's part of the world.
All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
Hi.
I suppose, here's my vote. And we begin tonight with some great recommendations. So, here's our.
Alright. Who do you think is the fourth one?
Roll it out.
Alright, uh, we're gonna start with, uh, our first is our business partner. And, uh, so we have Carrie Redfern, you come? I think a picture takes a thousand birds away.
Oh my god, it was fantastic.
My staff hadn't actually seen this picture and, uh, said, you know, there's definitely a candidate that we need to provide recognition to. This is the man who will go out of his restaurant to push buses. That is a special thing for us in education, because not everyone's gonna come out and push buses. So, we appreciate everything that you do, and School Power does as well. You're always there for us, uh, you're always smiling face when I go into the restaurant and you made a, a great mark in this community. And we're just, we're so thankful to have you.
Thank you, so greatly appreciated, and I really appreciate, thank you.
So don't go, it's okay.
Should we take the, Jason, should we take a picture with the board if we, should we go there?
Yes, come on over here.
Come on, I'm wearing shorts.
Monica and Wastel.
They're nice colored though.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, that's slicey.
No, I don't, it's really just like.
I'm drawing on a plan.
Come on.
I'll have to wear shorts. I can cover my shorts.
Alright, one, two.
Let's picture them.
Thank you.
Carrie, I went in after graduation, because we went in after graduation, it was so much fun in the restaurant. Parents were coming in, it was such a hug. I just, I mean, I, I was just exhausted from smiling graduation with the cocktail made by night. So, thank you very much, such a great place.
Appreciate it, so, thank you.
Anything you must share.
Yeah, there is, um, my wife and I set out, we opened Lumberyard almost ten years ago. We wanted to be, we wanted to be a community restaurant, that was our goal. We had a restaurant similar up in Coronetamar called Oysters that lasted twenty-two years, and we were very much a part of that community. But it's different. I always lived in Laguna Beach, so I never felt that closeness there as I do here. Because I've been a part of this community for so long. And so to actually kind of realize our dream in creating Lumberyard to where it's just so neat. People come in and they always seem to find somebody they know, we have a very communal bar. It's just, it's worked out, kind of how we wanted it to. And by the way, that picture, um, it was kind of selfish on my part, I couldn't see and to slice right through the window. The way, so I had to move it, because I couldn't see how they could do it. But I, I've always told everybody that ever asks about Laguna Beach and the school system and whatnot. I'm so fortunate that was able to raise our kids in Laguna Beach. Because they received what I always say is a private school education on a public school budget. And you guys do such a fabulous job, um, with all the teachers and it's just, so thank you for all the hard work you guys do and putting it together. The support of School Power, obviously, is just enormous too, so, anyway, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the big scale.
You guys are supposed to stay up here too.
Yeah.
You have to come back.
Scott Moore, come on down, Scott.
Going up.
Scott's with the Festival Arts Foundation, and as we know, um, Festival Arts has done an amazing job supporting our students, supporting, uh, our programs. Donation every year to, uh, to, to about twenty thousand dollars that go right into our programs to support the things that we need for our kids. So, we're very thankful to have that, um, and that partnership. I think it's, uh, it's amazing, not every, most school districts don't have that opportunity. It really does enhance the art and visual performing arts for our students, so we really appreciate that.
Thanks, thank you.
Rachel?
Thanks.
Yeah, the Festival Arts Foundation is now the FOA Foundation. We separated from the festival back when they were trying to move it to San Clemente. And we were worried they were gonna take our foundation and use it for something else. And so I became president of the foundation sixteen years ago, and, uh, so I've been president for the last sixteen years. Bill Darnell, when he was here, he was sort of the spearhead of giving some cash for the ceramics class. And, uh, and he became our spokesperson for all the teachers. He kept calling all the teachers, making sure they all lined up and sent in their applications and, uh, and so they've kept it going. And sometimes we have a little bit of a disconnect when a new teacher moves in and somebody doesn't tell them to apply. But tell them to apply, you know, we, we're ready for them. Plus, TOW, El Moro, and Thurston, whenever they apply for something, they usually always get something from us too. And they've been a little quiet lately, so you might wanna, you know.
Remind them, yeah.
But anyway, we, uh, we really think that the, the school is such a special place to be able to put our funds. That, uh, we see kids from kindergarten get up to the high school, and then we end up getting scholarships through our scholarship program. I'm also on the board of Festival Arts as vice president, so wearing a couple of hats. And there was a little miscommunication, I think at a meeting recently, I worried about the new calendar change. And, uh, the Festival Arts has no plans of ever stopping, uh, our scholarships with the, uh, with the high school. And that's something has nothing to do with, uh, participation in the badge and your volunteers or anything else. And so, we love you guys, and we want to make sure that, uh, you know, we work as partners as long as we can, and so.
My name is Jason, did you see the art festival we had at high school, all the student work?
Yes.
Because I was just so, it was so impressive, all the media that our teachers expose our students to, really a lot of opportunity. And it was all the grades, it was great.
Yeah, uh, we, we give about twenty-five thousand to Loca every year also. And we, you know how they come and fill in some of the secondary.
So we get benefit from that too.
Yes, and so, anyway, that's our main focus is, uh, you know, education for the kids and stuff. You guys do a great job, thank you, and thank you for making my kids so smart. I mean, I, as I can fall into my painting years, I've got two kids are gonna.
Support you.
Keep me in the restaurant, so it's gonna.
Do you wanna do a photo?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's always for free, yeah. Thank you guys.
Okay, so please.
I hope the students are gonna be working.
I know thankfully, um, uh, the next two people aren't necessarily going anywhere, I think they're still in their positions for another year. The first is Sheila, PTA council president.
Here.
So Sheila, uh, does an amazing job, there's actually more people in this room when you're here than when, when we're here. And we're like glued to the walls. But, um, you know, it's, it's an amazing opportunity for, for me to be involved alongside the PTA and what you do to support our students. Very successful PTAs in terms of raising funds, uh, go a long way to help our kids, um, inside and outside the classrooms. So, I feel privileged to have that opportunity, and the board also is so thankful for that partnership and your leadership. So look forward to another great year this next year.
Thank you very much. PTA is very honored to be in each of the schools, in the school district, and so thank you for allowing us to be there and work with you. And, um, most of you know, may not know, but we did wrap up the CLC PTA and merge them with, uh, Top of the World. So that's all finished, and that was our big, big thing that we worked on this year, so.
Seemed to go smoothly.
Yeah, it went very well, so thank you very much.
But also you've allowed our various assistants, and our superintendent to present to that council, then those PTA presidents. So it's just another way that we get to communicate.
Yes.
It's really valuable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why is it? Photo, show off. Photo of my.
Next is Chris Clark, our Endowment president. I love our meetings on Fridays, I just have to say, they're a lot of fun, they're usually quick too.
I will not miss you this summer.
You'll be around.
You'll be here.
Happy meeting at the Lumberyard. Yes.
Yeah, you know, I think, uh, again, tonight, the theme of tonight is just the amazing partnerships we have. But it's really the people behind those partnerships that make it work. And so, uh, I know that my staff, myself included, are so thankful. When we go to those meetings, uh, you guys as a group ask amazing questions, um, are always very thoughtful, uh, always pushing to say, you know, what else? And, uh, that makes us better, and so we really do appreciate that. I appreciate your leadership in that, really. I appreciate that you hold those meetings to an hour as much as you possibly can.
Sure.
And, uh, but that group as a whole, um, and your, your ability to kind of lead them and keep them on task, um, is, is amazing. So I just, again, we appreciate that, we know that, uh, Endowment is a very special thing for a school district to have, continues to grow. So, uh, that's always a good thing as well, um, and you get some amazing people to work with you, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
On behalf of the entire board, I'm just one representative, and, you know, we love working with all you guys. It's just such a wonderful relationship with the teachers, with the board, with the district, uh, uh, you know. I can't say enough, obviously, you've been at the meetings, a lot of you have, and we appreciate everyone who comes down and, uh, sits with us on Fridays to keep us tied in to what's going on, so that we can hopefully make good decisions on teacher grants, on the other grants we give. Robin, of course, who's here, has just been such a blessing for the years I've been on Endowment, and those before me. She's done such a great job to make us all look good, especially me, which is no easy task, I know. I would have a good speech for you, but she did not write one for me, and, uh, you're stuck with my words, so thank you very much.
Your final summer school.
Uh, yes, working.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, she's actually under the letter, so. School Power president Kristen Minner, though she's not here, maybe she's watching, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sure she is.
I'm sure she is.
That's what I love to watch when I'm in real life.
She's having an amazing year, again, just a real calm, cool, collected voice in the room. And one of those folks that asks great questions, and, uh, but I really appreciate it, just overall, when she walks into a room, she knows how to take command, and I think, uh, she, she clearly learned that a little bit from Robin, the way Robin interacts with, uh, those in the room. But when she starts speaking at those, uh, school power meetings, um, everyone calms down, looks right in, and is intent. And, um, she always has a lot of amazing things to share, and so she, she too, uh, deserves, uh, recognition. Fortunately, we'll try and catch her another time, she may be feeling better, um, but if you see her on the ballot, thank her for her amazing work. Because without the team, um, and that leadership, uh, it would be obviously a challenge to keep School Power running forward, so.
It's a tough position.
It is a tough position, yeah.
Put a lot of pressure on you guys too.
I don't envy the, I don't envy the, the, the new people coming in after, uh, the amazing leadership you guys have. You guys do an amazing job of kind of continuing to prop, prop up your folks, and, and Robin, um, you're next. I promise there's no face things, no songs we made for tonight.
Just poetry.
Just, yeah, some, some beat poetry.
Interpretive dance, I have, uh, too, that's we're gonna team up.
I have a dance.
So with, uh, Robin, uh, one of the first things, um, I remember sitting down having lunch with Robin, and I think the first thing she says, and this is probably in July, is, "What's your funny neat idea?" She's no idea what that was, uh, she said, "You better start paying, because we need an answer from you." But Robin is just a special person for me, um, she's always been someone who, uh, picks up the phone and calls, texts, um, is, has a philosophy of over-communicating, and in our business, that's important. You know, it's, uh, for us to be able to know, um, what is going on the School Power side, what we're trying to accomplish, how we can partner together. What ideas that she's, uh, hearing about, whether it's, uh, changing some things and how they do their, their dinners to, uh, locations of things that she's, she's just so nimble and quick to adjust. So I, as a, as a leader, watching her lead that organization, uh, I have a lot of praise for you in how you were able to navigate that, keep the ship running forward, every year updating yourself. And, um, and never want to raise your hand and say, "I deserve credit," because that's not the way you function. And so you, all people, take a step back and push people out in front of you, um, and are just there doing the work. And so we are just one, and privileged and thankful to have had the opportunity to work with you, uh, I know my team is as well. And, uh, you will be missed, I know you'll be in behind, trying to continue to help, uh, support Sarah, and she'll do a fantastic job because you've left the ship an amazing place for her, and she'll still have Chris, though I'm not sure she'll, she'll be able to control him as well as she has. I know it's hard to, yeah, let's, let's see. But again, it's just, uh, an amazing opportunity, I know that we're just really thankful to have, have the opportunity to work with you over the next, next few years, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, great.
You have your choice.
It's up to you.
When's your last day, Robin?
Um, it's, I'm kind of phasing out in July, like, I'm still mapping out where all the dead bodies are buried.
Do you have like a celebration this summer planned for just like freedom? Can I ask a question?
You know, there are, it's, there's been, or I'm good.
There's some, okay, okay, good, good, good.
I just wanna say this, I look at Robin both as a parent and then as a board member, and I just, you also brought a sense of humor when things were high stress. So I appreciated that as a parent volunteer sitting in those rooms. And then you kept us on track when we needed to focus and when the chatter in the room got completely off topic, which it can. So I just think you were professional, but you also always felt so integrated into the culture and positive energy of the school. So I appreciate that, I love working with you, and we've known each other since the Moms Club, since our kids were babies, so. Such a privilege, yeah.
Thank you, I, um, all of my heroes have been educators. So it's, um, my, my mom and my dad are both educators. And so it's just, it's been an honor for me to get to play a role in School Power's support of all of you and, and to make a difference, I mean, you would not want me in a classroom in a million years. So, so this has been my way to.
You might achieve real highly if you were.
To, um, to through School Power and working with all our amazing volunteers and business owners like Carrie Redfern and this generous community, it's just to work together and bring everyone together and be, play a part of that in supporting you all and what you're doing for students has been an honor, so I wanna thank you all.
Thank you, we can, yes?
Oh, and I'll leave.
And I'll leave.
And we can call you, you're not against that, Robin.
He's still only made the biggest sacrifice. I'm still not gonna fold laundry.
Is that the deal?
That's a good deal.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you, he's too cute.
That's a deal.
Yes, thank you.
Just in closing, uh, we are very lucky to have such amazing support from our community. And we did, we get to recognize, uh, just a handful of those, uh, partners every year. We would have a long list of, and, uh, folks out the door, if we did every single person do, uh, an organization that helps support our schools, because it's a long list. But, uh, you think about our district having just about three thousand students, and how this community really rallies around our students in, in every facet, from athletics to art, um, from, uh, just social emotional support, uh, you know, you just, you don't have that everywhere you go. And so, uh, again, I feel privileged to be able to work in such an amazing district, uh, to be able to have a, a school board that goes out and, and supports our students, enhances our partnerships, uh, makes it a special place, so. Thank you all for coming, we won't make you stay till item thirty-one.
Unless you want to.
Unless you want to, but, uh, thank, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
See you next year, Chris.
Now we, um, have public comment on items that are not on our agenda. Have a comment first. Yes, please.
My name is Natalie Newery. I believe the board should adopt the recommendations of the calendar study committee for all the reasons identified in the committee's presentation and those identified in the cer- survey results. There are too many complications leading to stress and missed opportunities the result from our district's late start date. And the late start impacts all of the grades at the high school. A hundred percent of the folks that study this issue in support of their role on the committee support the earlier start date, and that includes all three of the principals who are part of the committee. So that means at least one of the elementary principals supports the proposed change. I applaud the way that you've involved the students, parents, teachers, and staff in the process. Unfortunately, it's going to be impossible to please everyone on this issue. So who are you serving? First and foremost, I believe it's the kids. And the passionate folks at the first information meeting implored you to ask the kids. And a sizable majority, fifty-four to thirty-one percent, of them want an earlier start date. An even bigger majority of the staff, fifty-seven percent to twenty-eight percent, support the earlier start date. And forty of the certificateed staff in the high school documented this fact, and a not insignificant number of those folks spent two hours of their own time last Tuesday evening attending a meeting to support the kids and communicate to the board the importance of this issue. Thanks to Mrs. Honeycutt and all those who signed off and supported the documents she read to the board. And I wanna say that I support those who chose not to sign off on the letter too. I understand that everyone will not have the same opinion on this issue, and I respect the freedom to have and voice one's own opinion that differs from the, from the majority. I want our teachers to always feel free to express their opinions, because that's how the best decisions are derived, and everyone feels heard. Our district and many throughout the nation realize the need to better support the mental health of the students. I applaud our district in taking action to improve the support that is provided to the kids. The proposed calendar change will lessen the stress that many kids experience simply because our calendars does not align with the timelines associated with testing, college admissions, summer education, work opportunities, and so many experiential opportunities. Each of these is a big deal, and so is the stress they cause. The different levels of support for the proposed change at the different school levels is totally understandable. I had no idea of the impact of our late schedule until my kid entered high school. So I understand how so few elementary school families surveyed supported the proposed change, because they don't understand and appreciate what the high schoolers are going through. I heard people at the first informational meeting saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." They don't know, understandably, but they don't know. Who does know? The ninth through twelfth grader survey, they know, they're living it every day. They're the ones experiencing the stress that our calendar creates. I believe the recent, survey results are clear. One hundred percent of the calendar committee members believe to move up the start date is the best choice. The overwhelming majority of the students surveyed want the change. The overwhelming majority of the staff surveyed think it's the right thing to do. The parents of the kids at the elementary schools are the only group who didn't support the proposed change. Even Thurston was fifty-fifty. We all want what's best for the kids. If your goal is to support the kids, I don't see how, based on the kids and the staff survey results, if your goal is to support the kids, I don't see how you can do anything other than support the proposed, proposed change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay, I appreciate it, but I was gonna keep going until you buzz me off.
Is there any other public comment on item number agenda?
I don't have one.
Hi, my name's Kirsten Warner, I, um, unexpectedly stood up last Tuesday, and so I gathered my thoughts since then, because I wasn't prepared. I just felt like I might have been assumed in the big room that was a little rowdy, and I didn't, I really agree. So I, I stood up and I wanted to represent the kids, I wanted to speak as a kid, um, because the kids weren't there, and this implicates the kids the most. So I wrote a letter, um, and I sent it out to a bunch of, um, friends, and just saying, um, to encourage a compromise on to the proposed school calendar, just to try, I mean, I just, I want a Christmas or a holiday, win a break, to be the semester break. So, um, I said, "You can, um, if, if you agree, please write the board and let them know, or simply reply here if you support." And I got a lot of responses. I, I had, just two days, I had eleven families respond that equal twenty-seven children, students. One reply likes the calendar just as is, I mean, not as is, your proposed calendar. So this is what I, this is what I wrote, um, very similar to you. Last time the calendar was made up for review, um, for a change, I was completely against it for the same emotional reasons that are being defended today by that group. Now with older kids, I see the effect of the outside educational calendars, um, those calendars can't be avoided, and the stress to the students can't be avoided either. The kids were the largest group that participated in the survey, we talked about nine hundred and sixty-six kids. Fifty-four percent, uh, in favor of the change, the majority of the kids, um, are asking as, to have a change. So I don't know if this is scientific or not, but if you consider the sixteen percent that didn't know or didn't have an opinion, if you add that sixteen percent to the thirty-one that did not support, you're only at forty-seven percent, even taking that group of kids that didn't really care. So even at forty-seven percent, you, they still don't have a majority. Add that sixteen percent to fifty-four, and you have seventy percent majority, and that's a large majority. And the number one factor, um, was to end the semester at winter break was sixty percent. That was the largest of all factors for any side opposing or supporting. So I really do think that we need to somehow work in semester break. I've heard this opinion, um, well, the kids don't get to decide, and I, I'm like, well, why not? You know, these are the ones that are most affected. I just wish that the survey results can make it easier for you all to make a decision. We need to listen to our kids, uh, we've been telling them they have a voice, they've given us their voice, their answer, and we need to show that we are being listened to. So I'm gonna hand this, I'm gonna let you read the rest, or, and listen, um, you guys can read, you can see who replied, some. Some have little extra things like the bell schedule. They're in favor of the bell schedule.
So.
Uh, so anyway, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we begin with, uh, reports from, uh, the group rooms and CSA.
Well, I don't really have a report other than to say I'm honored to serve as the new president for, on behalf of teachers. And I look forward to working with the cabinet collaboratively and, um, I'm, we're currently trying to like schedule some meetings and get that all taken care of. So that's where we're at. Off to a good start.
Thank you for taking on that role.
Yes.
CSA, Margaret. Yes, well, first of all, I'd like to say that I feel fortunate that we've had another successful product in our school here. And CSA is pleased with our contract and moving forward. I just, um, regards to the lumberyard, we carry it anytime I've ever asked him for anything, for the CSA, for our meetings. Just this time he gave me double the amount. So, um, you know, that is part of our community bond here that, and, and other businesses also. If I had some carried with here tonight, I recognize that fact that he's always open to supporting us. An issue that I think is really important and Jeff Dixon started it and now Brian and Zania. Something that's dear to me is I got involved with the CERT program and many of you know I'm a registered nurse. But beyond that is we have disasters here in our community and we can have them at any time. And, you know, it's one of those things where we put together a safety plan and it looks good on paper. And certainly, everybody goes, "Wow, it's great and we've done a great job and everybody that's worked on the committee." But until we have a real emergency where we need the hands-on on the deck, we have to have people with buy-in. And so, um, when this International Safety Committee, uh, October meeting came up, which is nearby in Carlsbad, uh, and Mr. Conlin sent out, who would like to be on that, I immediately responded. And I know other people have responded it different because I've been encouraging classified people to get involved, especially those that are directly involved with children, although certificates need to be involved. And of course, our side administrators, because when that happens, we do need buy-in from everyone. And the teachers will be with the students, our classified staff will be with students or with, with facilitating what is happening during that disaster. So I, I really, I'm thankful that I work in a district that really accepts the fact that everyone needs to be, have professional development and training. And of course, you know, I've spoken about that on other areas with Dr. Odepo over here with the instructional assistance especially. So I want to thank you for really that allowing all of us to buy in to the complete and summer school system. And with that, summer school started.
Jump right back into it. I don't believe we have any organizing events here for the, your, their duty for us. The board members, if you attended any assignments, social.
Let me put up. Not yet, not yet, yes.
I, I did not attend anything, but I want to thank Kada for attending school power meeting for me because I had to. I did attend school party. It was mostly about timing and calendaring and making sure that it was timely. So that was good. And Jan and I also attended the CCA slash ROP meeting, um, meeting on the nineteenth. Group budget, um, will be getting the ongoing funding now and, and still coming through a weird way, but, but Kada's not. She's gonna squeeze them for every dime she can get. Uh, summer school classes, uh, there's, they're kind of all over. People want to go out there. We had a WASC review. We have yet to hear about if they have a little issue with our JPA and how that's set up. But she seems to think that's not gonna be a problem just because it was vetted and re-vetted and vetted and vetted again. Let's see. Oh, the catalog came out and the, the problem, not problem, but what they're finding is making sure that dual credit classes are coded as such in the catalog because if all the teachers don't attend the, the orientations that the college does, they don't, they aren't able to say that they get dual credit. She's working on that. Since we have a, a, a set curriculum for each class, she's hoping that, that we will be able to forego that and send one teacher rather than everybody having to come and then have, have your two-tier system because of kids taking the class. It's the class that should be dual credit. So that was the, um, the biggest thing. And then we will actually be having for our new fall offerings. God, um, I can't remember. Oh, medical hospital careers, um, and for a health pathway and, and actually a, a, a doctor from Hamilton, a gal, Heather Lewis is gonna be teaching it. And I guess she's really an intro to emergency medicine. So those two will be offered on campus next year. Our campus. Actually, yes, after Bell, on our campus next year. So it'll be nice because we've had great buy-in for the EMT stuff, so.
And the same.
Just that they, you mentioned it at our study session, that they are accommodating our kids because they start early.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so they start so much earlier than us. And our kids get accommodated by going extra, an extra half hour, so they make up the minutes. Because our, our OP classes are really, they have a minutes requirement.
Yeah.
And they have to meet that. That's it?
Yep.
Other than that, that meeting, and you can be either. So, Dr. Glory.
Just to think, one, uh, we, uh, we did have our SOPA council meeting. We have, uh, three of those a year. And, uh, it's quite a shit voting and there's only two of you that were voting. Me just feel very fast, uh, it's kind of odd emotion and, and all that. But, uh, it's, again, a nice partnership. We do have, um, a, a new person at like, ex-director at the SOPA level because we did lose Scott. So we're just, uh, at the tail end of the year trying to figure all out because they haven't replaced her. She's been working from Saddleback, so we, they've had the backfill. So it was a little, uh, uh, challenging for the last four or five months. But we figured we have it ironed out. Uh, I mean, uh, it's, it's happy. Looking forward to this next year. Just appreciate the partnership and, uh, with Saddleback on that. I also attended a FICMA board meeting as an alternate for, um, Mr. Dole, from Dr. Dole from CAPO. And that was up in, um, San Barbara on Sunday. Again, just stuff about the budget, stuff about how the, the money for CCA and our, uh, is coming, or a very unique process. There are representatives, uh, from the community colleges who were there present, kind of explaining the intent of how it's supposed to be delivered. There's still a lot of, as we all know, legwork that has to get done because there's a lack of clarity in process and procedure. So, uh, though that was proposed by the government, governor, and they agreed to it, there really is not a specific way by which it has to be done just yet. So there is gonna need to be some, uh, some things worked out. Again, luckily you're in a room full of superintendents and county superintendents who all are demanding access to their funds. So this representative, I think it was the vice president of the chancellor's office, was hearing that a lot of clear. And Nick, uh, Nick, I forget what it was, was it Schweizer? He's the deputy state superintendent. Uh, he and Karen actually are involved, but he's always at those meetings as well. And so he heard a lot of clarity and was very, said, "Yes, we need to figure this out and be very clear, uh, or accomplish this." Uh, there was also just a unfortunate situation where the California Department submitted our ESSA plan as a state to the federal government. We were all under the assumption it was going to fly right through, it flew right off the desk into the attorney's offices. And the attorney's offices of the US Department said there's some compliance issues that still need to be ironed out. So the.
That's not shocking at all.
The, the US Department of Defense actually felt, uh, the, that armed and illegal side were, did not expect this. So it slowed it all down. So we're all waiting to see what the implications are for the Title I and dollars, Title II dollars. Again, there's still Plan B because they weren't expecting that this was gonna happen. But the, the folks at the CTE are confident that they'll be able to get it ironed out and addressed. But again, it's a lot of change. We've had change with the ESSA on the federal side. And we've had a lot of change on our side in California related to LCAP, LCAF funding. And trying to meld the two concepts together, um, is not always the easiest thing to do. So, um, the board at last meeting saw the LCAP addendum for federal addendum. So they're trying to create some alignment so that it's not redemptions. But it does create a lot of groups for us to jump through the process. So, again, things are still moving at the state level, um, especially at the federal level, uh, around education. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to go and attend those meetings and hear directly firsthand from, from those various counties as well. So it's, each region has a representation. So, uh, Al Harris is actually on for our region, but that also sweeps down to San Diego County as well. So, uh, very, very large area.
So anyone from Saddleback that you can.
It's just myself representing.
And not in Saddleback Community College.
No, just the chancellor. It's just the, the chancellor's office that oversees all of the community colleges.
Because that's what we're seeing through CCA is that it's been tough for them to work with Saddleback. They wanted to do it, that's their way.
Yes, and that's what was articulated by a couple of superintendents, uh, that the money is ours. You're just the one sitting on it. And so your job is to give it to us.
It's not yours.
It's not yours, right? So they'll, they'll tell us that it's not necessarily, uh, so we'll, we're gonna continue to work through that. But I think I'll look at it at the state level. I, I know superintendent Portland's well aware of this, this, the address. And I know that, uh, the, uh, someone, I think it's, uh, Donald, uh, who was the one really pushing to get this through. Not in the way that it came through, but some dedicated funding to CTE, uh, he would be jumping on it as well, as my understanding. So, a lot's still going on even at the end of the year, so.
It's never been.
And. Starts the next one.
I know, a lot of similar work and stuff, yeah.
So I want to first thank you all for your support of the employee appreciation barbecue last week. It's nice to see you there and I know our employees were happy to be able to sit and chat for, um, a period of time and it just keeps getting better and better. I'd like to acknowledge the HR and public communications team for their work in, in all the preparation and.
Cooking.
Well, and our administrators who, um, were behind the grill.
Sounds like behind the scenes.
Yes. Yeah, worked behind us.
Open kitchen to see what's going on.
So we had a lot of fun. And then I'd like to welcome Sarah to your new role and I look forward to working with you. Congratulations. Hope you get a very good year.
I hope so too.
Thank you. And Margaret, I'm, we're always happy that you're still in that seat and we'll continue to work collaboratively with you as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just a few things for me. Welcome to Sarah. Love working with you, so thank you. It was good to learn great things from you all. Uh, summer school started yesterday, so I spent, uh, I got to walk top of the world and the high school today and teaching for knee-deep in direct instruction for our math at the high school this morning. And, um, kids were knee-deep in, uh, building sentences and writing journals, so it's great to see. We've completed three days of NGSs planning, but training with our middle school teachers today. Also Friday, Monday, Tuesday, that was going really well. And unconscious bias training with the support of our, um, stakeholder groups has continued. Day one completed, two and a half days of that. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Consent calendars next, or are there any items that we would like to bring with us? Can I ask for a motion to approve consent calendar items A through N sometimes? Any, so any public comment on consent calendar? Can we count on it? Are there any questions? Well, we don't have a discussion with this. If you want to discuss, you may hold. So consent, I mean, it's just the line of questions.
Okay, my other question. Are, um, are lunch prices pretty consistent with other districts?
Lower.
Oh, yeah, awesome. And my other question is, um, I threw the market. I'm really glad, I mean, people are going to international school safety conferences. Could we have a report back out of that? So, you know, the rest of us who don't go might be better prepared or, you know, your colleagues who don't go might be better prepared.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the intent of sending votes to the conferences there comes back to the safety committee. It influences the safety plans that they have at our school sites, determining, um, uh, other adjustments that need to be made. What have they learned from the conference and how does that play out in, uh, at each individual site? Because every site's unique, obviously, with, uh, open campuses, closed campuses, so on and so forth. I see it as a nice step into segueing into the fall where we are gonna have, uh, staff from the primary school department coming to do, uh, an assessment of our grounds, uh, that we're aligning. So they're gonna be on campus kind of watching flow, uh, students over the course of the day, right? And it's been scheduling, working on scheduling that with those folks. So I think it's, it's all part of what we're gonna do. So I expect that you'll see, uh, layers of that in the, uh, safety plans where we're having to add some things in the weekly, you know, you have to put some things that were learned and take away, keep away, so.
Like the Shepherd's Department is, and about the gun training, are we going to have them with guns at the school?
No.
Yeah, that was part of that.
No, the, the training, the, there was an add-on component of that that was, um, the title's, it's unique, Top Gun Training. But the, uh, the, the bulk of the training actually is, uh, on, uh, kind of the first aid, trauma and first aid. That needs to, uh, triage, that needs to happen unfortunately in those situations. Obviously, a part of that, uh, component, uh, is, uh, going off to, and, and learning about gun safety and so on and so forth. And in order to learn about gun safety, uh, there needs to be, uh, prescription and firing that goes off. They're not in actual firing range. I, I believe at this point, we don't have anybody who's attending that. There was one person did express a potential interest in going. But at this point, we're still, we haven't registered anybody, so we don't register until the board approves. But we'll ver, we're trying to verify who exactly had the interest. I know we had a couple of teachers interested, but I think they misunderstood. Day one conference was not that. We're sending people to the conference, um, uh, not necessarily that component of the conference, so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Oh, I just had one. Anyone else? I just had a, um, wondering on the renewal of the fourth of August meetings. Renegades, is that right? Said in the future, can you, Mike has the information of like people that are doing it.
Yes.
Just, just have an idea of how popular that is.
We actually put that in the quarterly, um, report that Anna Karen has generated. So we'll have another one of those, uh, very soon.
It might be up to like five. I think that would really happen every Tuesday. Some have, we're counting spouses and relatives.
We can't say who, who watches.
Okay. And, um, we have a motion for a second, and so all those in favor.
Aye.
opposed, Carrie Spilwell. Uh, we have no information on items tonight because we have, we're back tonight. So our first action item, item fourteen, approval of the local control and accountability plan and annual update, Dr. Odepo.
Yes, so thank you, uh, for bringing us forward, um, for final approval. We have not received any questions or feedback on our outcomes.
We have not received.
Yes, so we're required to respond. Actually, superintendent Destiny is required to respond and we haven't received any.
So that means we're good.
So we're submitting, we have, but I thought, uh, public hearing last, uh, last four minutes, uh, about changes. So that's what's managed for a couple of time.
Public comment on the final approval of the LCAP. So we have, you have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
This is kind of the static here, right?
Three periods.
And it's.
Right. We have a motion. Any discussion? I think actually that we have no comments. Thanks to the hard work everyone did. And the fact that maybe we did reach out enough. Thank you, Dr. Newt. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Carrie Spilwell. Action item fifteen, approval of the federal addendum to the local control and accountability plan.
So thank you. So this is new for us this year. It does replace the former LEA plan. So the CONAP plus the LCAP plus the federal addendum with full, uh, approval means that we can expend our funds. So it's, our math equation is, uh, CONAP plus, plus LCAP plus federal addendum. So this is the piece, and this piece of those three items talks through our strategy. How are we spending our funds? What does that look like? And so for just a little bit of context, Title I, II, and III is in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And so for just a little bit of context, total one, two, and three is an amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Do you have any public comment? Uh, word questions? Motion please, second. And Carol, and the comments that you just made about the federal government, ESSA, does that have any implication on this?
Yes, essentially what would happen is, uh, if the state can't get approval from the federal government related to this being sufficient and getting everything approved as our accountability measures. Uh, then we, as all districts and state, would not be able to expend federal dollars until such time that it's officially approved. Uh, so it's really important that they get this done before October, so that school districts, um, can expend funds, or they will have to be peppered in jail, fund dollars until such time that it's approved, so.
So us had a call of two hundred and seventy thousand.
We're involved in.
We're inside of, but LA county is standing out of their crust. So the, the issue with the government and the compliance issues, is that state or is it individual business?
State.
State.
Yeah, so the state basically takes the ESSA plan that we all have to live under, is ultimately there the, the state education, the state submitting on, on behalf. This is our plan to hold the local educational institutions compliant with the ESSA, so that's the, uh. What I understand is it's more, the issue's more about timing, uh, identifying schools that are not meeting the former standards. The state of California was asked, was looking at not this next year, but the following year, being, being identification years, we're still working through performance indicators, dashboards, so on and so forth. ESSA doesn't allow that flexibility, is what, uh, what our understanding is, and so that's why the attorney said, well, you can't approve it, because it doesn't align with what? So you gotta, someone's got to make a shift here, so they're probably gonna go have, go back and have to make alignment to identifying schools a little earlier. Uh, but you more do that, you have to rewrite it, take it back to the state board of education, state board has to approve it, so that's, those are the timeline pieces that are, that are in there, so there are some implications. But what I was hearing, uh, on Sunday was that, you know, they're, with every intent is to get it done, you know, and to get those things fixed, resubmitted as quickly as possible, so they don't have any potential lingering issues around actually expending your dollars, so.
So what's a potential timeline, I mean, do they give you in terms of weeks, months?
Yeah, because their intent is, you know, again, they have to take it back to the state board of education, meaning, meaning, so I see that, that agenda's in the orders, they've set dates. Um, they, I, I think they believe that they're gonna have it done, uh, before that time, uh, but, however, they also didn't think that they were gonna have an issue this time. So, uh, you know, you never know, uh, it could get done and then they've submitted and then something else could be potentially wrong with it, but they don't see it that way. And, uh, they feel like they've had a fairly good relationship so far with the department in terms of getting this stuff fixed, so. For us, it's not a big deal, but as, I remember Brown mentioned, those districts that have a significant number of one dollars, could be, could be problematic, you know. We're gonna do those on the jump fund side for, for a period of time, but I'm not sure some of the districts will be able to, so there's a, a big question to answer.
Thank you. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Carrie Spilbo. Item sixteen, approval of the twenty eighteen nineteen all points legend.
Thank you for the readers, this is, uh, before I talk about this, I want to first acknowledge Raymond Lee, he's doing my office, putting a lot of work into this. And we've been making changes each year to it, to make it more simplified, easier to read, I mean, we see there's a lot of detail goes with the backup and the SAT software. Um, and this is very similar to the LCAP, that we proved two items ago and that there's been no changes since our information, uh, last meeting. Um, and I would like to also thank Dr. Gloria for providing us a letter for our editor of future.
So if I probably carried last time, your presentation last time, this is just.
Exactly the same, yep.
On this piece, and allowing that time to take place in case you have necessary lines of input.
Yes, some feedback and some.
And that didn't happen, great. Okay, public comment, uh, our twenty eighteen nineteen pledge. Word questions? Motion please, second. Any discussion? Just once again, thank you, it's being able to read the narrative and trust the numbers and find them, fit them in, it's very appreciating. Also very reassuring, I mean, it's, I have every confidence in the integrity of your reports and the accuracy of the letter. Great, so that is very. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, since I've talked about longer, all these things are seen in our work.
I think that's been so much work.
Those in LCAP, those in the budget, so you thank your guys down, or guy down there, tip.
Yes.
We do appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And their reward is that they don't need to come to meetings.
I've tried to volunteer them several times.
You did. They declined, right away, respect.
Respect, yes.
Thank you, item seventeen, approval and instructional minutes for a renovation of high school district, Dr. Devo.
Thank you, so for echo, we're required to verify to each site, but it needs minimal furnace, and our strength too is maybe in the chart.
Public comment? Four questions?
You probably don't know this off the top of your head, but the maximum number of minutes that a school, like an elementary would have.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can, uh, I can, it's right on the CD website, I think.
There's no max, just that was, yeah, there's no maximum.
Oh, there's no maximum, we've cheated forever.
Yeah, I mean, in districts, some districts set, um, percentages above the minimum, above the minimums, as that's what they would like to have as their minimums. Uh, other districts align strictly to the minimum, um, but, uh, there's no, no actual max, everything is a minimum, so minimum hundred and eighty school days, minimum sixty four thousand eight hundred minutes for a high school, that's our minimums.
Any questions? Motion please, second. Uh, discussion? About the high school.
That was gonna say.
Hundred twenty minutes, woo!
It's snow days.
Snow days here.
How are you gonna?
Well, we get over some of those.
We have ways of getting down.
So, yeah, for our structural answers, uh, with these sorts of situations, uh, again, this is what we're submitting for next year, uh, as approval. If there's, uh, mitigating circumstances, uh, we can file for a J thirteen, uh, which would then, uh, in both instances, whether it's the fire when we shut down. Or we may look, uh, at, uh, we also could file, we have an alumni attendance, and recently a moral. Uh, so we're able to follow this, which then, they recalculate, uh, the normal list. Assuming it's.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Carrie Spilbo. Uh, action item eighteen, approval of twenty eighteen nineteen proposal for non- represented classified institutionated place in accordance with AB twelve hundred. Chapter one, twelve thirteen, nine slash nineteen ninety-one, and CCR title five, section one five, go four nine.
Uh, so you will recall at the last meeting, you approved agreements with our employee bargaining, it's, uh, certificated and classified. So this, uh, proposal is for managing unrepresented, um, it's the same compensation package offered to our, our group to with our employee groups.
Public comment? Four questions? Motion please, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Carrie Spilbo. Action item nineteen, approval to create position of attendance specialist at Redding High School for five point seven five hours per day, ten point five minutes per year.
Thank you, so as, uh, you're probably aware, we, we do already have a full-time attendance specialist at the high school. This year, um, in support of, um, addressing attendance and particularly chronic absenteeism at the high school, we added additional temporary support. Um, which has proven helpful in addressing some of the systemic, um, issues with, related to procedures for attendance accounting. Uh, so we would like to make that an ongoing position, um, and we are essentially reallocating the funding from the coordinator of community service position that we have not filled this year. Um, and so we would, in lieu of that, we would fill it with, with this position, which is more needed, uh, now that we have certificated stuff, um, operating at, at CX student activities.
Just, just a question, what, what is this? Public comment? So my question is, was that, what was Scott doing, and I know I'm not just you people, but this is all of my kids right in my hand, was this what he was doing a part of his day?
No, this is more of the clerical end, uh, so we actually had a campus supervisor working out of class for a, a good amount of this year, uh, maintaining a lot of these functions.
I was doing some student activity.
Yeah.
But also, he was doing some, uh, attendance follow-ups, services, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Intervention side of the house, uh, so we can try, try that for the year as well, trying, trying to get.
I can track him down.
Try to track him down, keep him accountable, so he does a nice job, uh, with sort of segment of students, we're kind of reaching out, establishing relationships, if he knows important, creating that follow-up, not ready to call parents, and do the work there. Uh, this was one that just, we really wanted to make sure that we were doing diligence before we brought it forward. Uh, it was a request that was made fairly early on, um, in, I would say, late.
October.
Late fall, uh, which we said, we want, go through the whole year and then come back to us at the end and tell us, thankfully, uh, CSCA, uh, supported the work there. They were able to, uh, help create, create evaluation, uh, at least it's, uh, working with Dr. Allman and his staff to determine the need. What you'll see in the statistics, data related to attendance is our actual attendance rates are worse this year than last year in relation to the high school. Uh, I don't believe our attendance is actually worse, I think our accounting is better.
Is that, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, so this, this, this is really has helped out and will also help improve our systems to identify students early on, uh, work with families early on, make sure we're getting the information we need. So that our counselors, our staff can respond accordingly to follow-ups as necessary.
So this is, uh, interesting about all this. And as a high school parent, I'm gonna say that any improvement in the system of attendance is greatly appreciated because the system's not proficient as I.
Oh, sorry.
My statement's.
I might not understand this, so there's gonna be one full-time person that's keeping track if students are there, and another five and a half hour a day person that is calling if a student isn't there?
I don't know the specific roles, the goal's to change job description.
Okay, so we're having two.
Correct, it's, it's more support, um, yes, to do more of the, of the follow-up pieces.
Of course, it's been a few years now, but, I mean, uh, my niece was there, the attendance person was my neighbor, and she, yeah, she was on the pulmonary way of child.
That's how it's happening.
And is it, uh, is it a function of who's doing it?
I, I don't wanna make that judgment, but it should be, it should definitely be.
There's two busy, so they need, so they need sixteen hours a day to keep track of if a kid's in there?
We evaluated the entire, the, all of the duties within the office and all of the systems in place, and it was determined that this was the essential need.
Because there's period absences, I mean, it's not, just a lot of days, a lot to break down, that's what, earlier in the year, when Dr. Allman was talking, he says about the period absences, like maybe after lunch, and things that weren't getting correct.
Right, there's also, it's been shifts in data recording requirements related to, uh, how things are coded, so, for many, many years, if a student was marked absent and they, they never followed up on that absence, and this is not, you know, it could be just a long, many, many districts. Uh, it was never followed up on, the student was just considered, you know, kind of absent, lost in space, I guess, for lack of a better term. The state has required now that all of those be coded, whether they, uh, it now gets converted to an unver, unexcused, unverified absence, which is a trend. So our job, uh, is to, the direct task is to figure out where those students are, and do all that follow-up, which is a significant amount of work, especially when you have a transfer rate that's upwards of seventy percent. Okay, not unlike many other districts like ours, uh, Irvine similars, and either places that I've been, have very high transfer rates, because it takes three period absences.
Sweet, right? Right.
At a high school to be considered a trend, so we have an obligation to start really kind of buckling down on that, while at the same time, having accurate data, first so that we can take students through the start process, our student temporary review board process. If you don't have accurate information, if you go down that, that road, and it goes to a judge, or to that extent, they're gonna expect that the data and the information's accurate, so. There is a lot of work that needs to be done there, that was one of the reasons that, uh, Ms. Wilson and I said, we're not gonna jump on this right away, we wanna do an evaluation, we want you to determine why, you know, what's the need, how's this functioning within the department? And, uh, you know, after her, after Lisa went over and spent time, it has come back that this is something that they, it's really important, valuable to the site, so.
Well, if, hopefully, the transfer rate will go down.
Right.
It'll be accurate and it'll go down, and in that case, I'm assuming of the reevaluation, would just, as you guys always do, it's down, and how it was working, where everybody want.
Right.
Yeah, and how are they convinced that? And, and you don't have, this need does not exist at any other sites, that the, the need for additional manpower right now.
Correct, but, but you're aware, we, uh, we have, we evaluate support at each of the schools, so a few years ago, we added additional office support.
Right. Right.
For top of the world, so that.
Right, right.
And that's a change.
So that's, so we always evaluate.
It's just, it's just, it's just a part of the evaluation process to, to, that's, that's, yeah.
I could understand if like Carol said, I mean, we're counting better, and so maybe more students won't be trained, but our goal is really to have students be in school, not to punish them because they're.
Right.
All to train, very obligation by law to, if they're absent for, excuse, absence for illness, or idea it's a different set, but even then, students who are absent for extended illnesses, we have an obligation to reach out and determine.
Right.
Is there something going on, uh, there's child find obligations there as well, so, um, it, when you look at our chronic absenteeism rates being the size it is, we have work to do, so. Uh, that is a metric by which we're judged, so I think it behooves us to put energy and, and money towards getting this situated, uh, and getting a system in place that's strong that is addressing, uh, our attendance. Um, simply for that, that it's, it's part of our accountability measures, and so we have gone to, we've been putting some effort in, making sure we're getting campus and classrooms.
I know there's realities about it, and there's social, emotional related to it, and it's.
So, but, but I, I think, I think we need to be doing something on that other end too.
Kids there, we saw in Seaboard. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Yeah, Carrie's, I, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Simple that, I mean, it's just a good thing. Uh, item twenty, approval to revise job description for communication specialist and increase work date from seven hours per day to eight hours per day.
Thank you, so you may recall back, I believe it was January, when we brought forward a job description for the technology to us, is we have reevaluated those roles. And one of the things that we noticed is that the district website functions, technology of course changing so quickly, um, though, that role was actually associated with the teacher position. And it's actually clas, considered classified employee work, so, um, at, since that time, we have reevaluated that role and, and the to, to set technology, we're really focusing on how to use technology within the classroom setting. And so we have to look at, where does this, the website functions best fit? And it really best fits with the communications role, um, because that person is really in charge of a lot of, uh, the communication branding, making sure that things are consistent, that things, that the news is posted, things are updated. So it made sense to associate it with this role, and so with those additional duties, uh, would require an additional hour a day, um, and so you see that reflected here. So since we were bringing it forward for revising the job descriptions with those duties included, we took a look at the whole job description, shortened up the title, um, and made it a little more descriptive of what the job actually is. And so you see, um, updates to this job description here, so, uh, it's this, uh, we are recommending revising this job description as it's indicated here and increasing the date and hour of date.
Public comment? Four questions? So, second, discussion? Makes sense, it seems like it's me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie Spilbo. Action item twenty-one, revised job description, data support specialist.
Thank you, so, um, whenever we have a, a vacancy, um, and especially with the one of one job, uh, where we have one person who does it, um, we always wanna look at it, especially in the area of technology. So, um, this job description, uh, we're recommending several updates, uh, to focus more on the data role, um, since we have our technology to us, uh, more focused on the training role. Um, there isn't as much need to do training, it's more new employee onboarding that this person would do some of, but the primary function of the job is really to support our, uh, increasing needs in data and databases such as CalPAS.
Or public comment? Four questions? Motion please, second, discussion? So this is, this will, this will be the perfect chapter.
Yes.
Right, everyone, that everyone is dying now.
Yes, our hope is that we find someone who has experience with CalPAS and student information systems like ARIUS that are. Yes, our hope is that we find someone who has experience with CalPaaS and student information systems like Arius that are lots of data, yes, lots of data generated for days.
Well, you know, students make sense years ago, or whatever it is, so.
And Lisa, do you think there'll be a lot of people applying?
Well, um.
Because there are a lot of, it seems like there's just a lot of jobs out for people that there that have this kind of experience.
Yes, but one of the benefits we have here is that we, we pay well, um, and it's a great place to work, so I think anyone who is, has the experience outlined in this job description would be very interested in this position.
Full-time position?
Yes, and there's no change to the salary range or, um, the hours or anything.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Here's my vote. Uh, item twenty-two, approval agreement for contracted services with West Health Advocate Solutions, Inc. to provide employee online wellness services with a not to exceed amount of twenty-three thousand. Dismissed.
Thank you.
Busy.
So, um, we've talked to you several times about our employee wellness subcommittee, uh, subcommittee of the interns committee that's been meeting, um, ongoing this year, and you'll see in the backup for this item that we have focused on developing goals and strategies that we would like, that we think are really important for our employees. Um, and so, uh, we received a rebate from Blue Shield, um, for an overpayment of ACA fees. So we decided to utilize that to form this wellness subcommittee and to really put the, that money, um, forward for employee wellness. So over this last year, we have done a number of assessment, uh, assessing different carriers, different, um, vendors for wellness programs, and we, uh, decided to recommend, um, Health Advocate, which may sound familiar because they're also our employee assistance program. So we felt like they had a really nice comprehensive, uh, online program, uh, as well as the district can initiate challenges through that program, and employees can earn points and get rewards for, for that. Um, and so, uh, you'll see here a contract for Health Advocate, Health Advocate, uh, in their wellness program, and, um, we'll begin, uh, implementation of that in August when employees come back. We're planning to hold a kickoff health fair, um, right after the welcome back breakfast, so right after people eat their big breakfasts and don't have. Um, they can actually have biometric screenings and, um, can actually get more information about the online program, and they can earn points for completing certain tasks like going to the doctor.
Swimming labs.
Yes, yes, yeah, actually, there's a, they get points for health tracking.
Right. Right.
Um, yes, and so, uh, we're gonna continue to look for, um, things that our employees need in terms of wellness, but we feel like this is a good start, um, and so this contract, uh, would kick us off.
So this is gonna work in conjunction with, uh, with, correct with the law, but I think, don't, we have a call-in, so if, if employees in crisis of some sort, they can call that, so this will be in conjunction with.
Yes, yes, so it's a kind of a one-stop shop.
Okay, so that. Oh, good.
Um, like if you log into the.
Are they, they're, are they doing that part too?
Yes.
Okay, so perfect, okay.
Okay, they do go, yes.
Okay, that's great.
So we currently have the, the EAP, which offers free counseling, uh, sessions, online counseling to anyone within the household of the employee. Um, this would be for employee only, just clarify that, um, but it is a, a good start, because we, what we hear from employees is that they don't go to the, you know, if they feel healthy, they tend not to go to the doctor, and then until they feel sick. And we really wanna focus on prevention and encouraging healthy habits and, 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 uh, social, emotional wellness as well.
Holy comment? Or questions?
So this is a one year, one year kind of to try it?
The agreement is for three, so we have agreed to that, um, and we can reassess at that point, um, but we feel like we would need more than a year to kind of.
Right, and we're comfortable with if we don't get another rebate, is that we're comfortable with picking that as a cost?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, because part of it, uh, we are, are within the cap even still with this amount, um, because we were able to negotiate such good, uh, such good rates.
And it's for any employee, they don't have to be in Blue Shield, it's for anyone, whatever insurance plan they have.
They don't even need to be enrolled in health benefits, so this would also cover our part-time employees.
Okay. Yes.
Oh, that'd be great.
Have to wait. Yes, so that was one of the priorities that we looked at, was we wanted to make sure, just like our EAP covers all employees, that this program could also address that, so at least they're getting some sort of screening.
Yeah.
Correct.
And then it's, it's had a three-year contract, and then, so we're obligated this way, and then it would automatically renew as another three unless we choose to do it.
Correct.
So now, that would not be a problem to be pulled out.
No.
So this way you're just gonna be finding time to.
Right, that'll allow us to assess, are people really using it, are they participating?
And you're gonna really encourage people to use it, I mean, we have.
Yes. Yes, so.
PR, PR plans to.
Absolutely, yep, we're already working on it, and in fact, um, so we have the ability to set up, employees can set up their own challenge, challenges within the system, so they can even just challenge a teaming. So to kind of, you know, we're gonna do a walking challenge, or we're gonna do a water challenge. Um, and so we can initiate, uh, organizational challenges also to try to encourage some, some participation.
At least they'll have a boot camp, right?
Looking forward to that. I'm not running it though.
There's a motion. So, any discussion? Question, got carried away, that's what I should, that was the, you know, any other, any more to? On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Nice plan. Next one. Uh, item twenty-three, approval agreement for contracted services from Nicole Mueller and Associates, Inc. to conduct investigations into the legal residency of enrolled students within the jurisdiction of Laguna Beach Elementary School District, as well as risk management investigations for twenty eighteen nineteen with a not to exceed amount of eighty-five thousand. And that's.
Last one for me, uh, so this is our annual contract with Nicole Mueller to, uh, conduct investigations as, um, nascent basis, this current, um, uh, recommendation is for a not to exceed amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, as you know. Sometimes we can't anticipate, um, how many investigations or residency verifications we need to complete, so, um, we hope not to, you know, need to reach that amount, but we feel that that's a good amount to, uh, start with for this year.
Holy comment? Or questions?
So what was our amount we reached this last year?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but I know, we had to bring it back, I think.
Yeah, I think we did, because we had some unusual situations.
Uh, have you worked with the other people on that, um, support thing?
Yes.
I don't know about pay attention, for example, it's just.
No, it depends on the risk rating and what the, she has a, uh, better term, team, and those that come in and do, especially in this particular areas.
Yeah, okay. Motion please, so, second. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Here's my vote. Um, action item twenty-four, approval annual contract with Addison, Anderson, Lloyd, Reed, and Zolmo for legal services in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy thousand. Mr. Dixon?
President Dickerson, this is establishing our annual not to exceed for Addison and Anderson, I'll leave off the rest of the names. It's, if you recall, we, I set up a contract with them last year, a three-year agreement, but we then had to go back to the board to raise the not to exceed, and that was two of the hundred and seventy thousand, so we're recommending that we reestablish that for this fiscal year, um, for Addison and Anderson for a hundred and seventy thousand.
Holy comment? Or questions? You're saying that it's over three years?
For one year, one fiscal year, not to exceed, but we have a three-year contract.
Oh, that's what.
I wish.
Yeah.
Motion, so, it's. Okay, now, uh, discussion. I just, I'm grateful that these attorneys work for these organizations, you know, it's a great service for that, and it's a public service. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Here's my vote. Action item twenty-five, approval agreement with Best Best and Crigger for legal counsel related to special education issues with a not to exceed amount of thirty thousand for the twenty eighteen nineteen school year.
And this takes. I love that. So, this is with Best Best and Crigger, it's their annual contract not to exceed, so they, we can continue to support our students and provide the services to our families.
Holy comment? Or questions? Motion please, so, second. Carol, discussion.
This one's for Tana Tucker.
Right, right, we're moving over. On this favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie's my vote. Uh, action item twenty-six, approval agreement with Carbottle Law Group for general and special education legal counsel for the twenty eighteen nineteen with a not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars. Again, Dr. Devoe.
Yes, so thank you, we've been working with Carbottle, uh, for those, uh, for general education, but we'd like to, uh, general, special education, of the police service, student services as well, this annual not to exceed.
Holy comment? Or questions? Motion? One more, second. Carol, discussion.
Thank you for having a variety of people on for, I mean, there's a kind of, you should even mediate about different cases, Carol, so, thanks for doing this your head time. Because they do have.
Especially.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and with Carbottle, I'll actually add comment that I heard from a teacher the other day, uh, one of their main attorneys is, is a former, uh, special ed person. She taught, she knows what goes on inside the classroom, um, but that's a special person that have, uh, a little bit, she understands what it means for a teacher in a classroom or an instructional aid.
Yeah.
And is very supportive, um, we really appreciate the work that she's been doing, and, uh, so the comments that I've received, which are working with staff, um, she's really supportive, and that's what she likes to hear.
We may, I, I feel we make every attempt to not rush to legal, uh, the law, the cap, but it's certainly in this day and age is vile, we have legal counsel, we need it, and it, because issues are complicated. Particularly in the specialized field, but in any field, it must need to be prepared, so, um, any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
opposed? Here's my vote. Action item twenty-seven, approval of music facilities be scheduled for the twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year. Is it, is it fighting business?
Also, we're not taking, uh. So we, every year, look at our facility use charges, and there are various, that's what we call, called the Department of Education, on how you calculate those facility use fees. And looking at, uh, prior to the history and utility bills in particular, we realized we were able to lower some of our facility use power lead costs, and then we reformatted it to be template, uh, into what's more traditional, other districts are used to seeing. Um, so we're hoping to increase the usability of our fields and the affordability of that as well, but still covering our actual cost of, of, of facilities. Um, I did provide a handout that shows the current rates in, of the new region, you can see all categories, it's a little bit, slightly lower, in particular in stadium, it's probably better.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, three seventy-six to eighty-two dollars.
Is that the one yet?
And the primary factor for that is we have the stadium lights on anyway, so we were, given the charge in the past, we didn't feel that would be fair, and our stadium neighbors to our facility and our new partners, we wanna make sure that we're only charging our actual of and beyond costs.
No questions? Is that the second question? Discussion.
Um, I appreciate it's a civic center, that we always reiterate that that's on the census, it's interesting, we need to share.
Does that, does people know that the rates are going down?
If you want to.
We'll put them on our website, and we've been, people try to negotiate with us all the time, so at least now we're saying this is our actual base, we can't charge to get these from this.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, just, just something stood out to me, right, and with our, this, this phone app people, that, that, um, we've, as always, we've been very collaborative with the city, so we're working on. But they don't really fit into, I guess, A.
It's a joint use, it's a joint use agreement, so it's outside of this.
So, is it not, is it, is it joint, so, yeah, the agreement covers that?
Yes.
Okay.
What I've seen, so, yes.
I'm not saying that we should do it differently, I mean, we're not using it. And we talked about that when we negotiated the joint use.
Oh, wow.
Um, yeah, I don't know how many years ago, because we, because when they were getting all pushy about the.
Slower.
I was just wondering how we, how we classify it, since they technically did.
And then what, and what's the Patriots' apron, what's that?
Well, that's, I was thinking, I was just thinking the summer, so, yeah, artillery.
Yeah.
Oh, for, yeah.
But, so it's, it's not in the joint use agreement itself, but it's also impossible to regulate.
Right, that's.
So.
We don't formalize it as a use, we, we talked about it.
No, we let them publicize it, I mean, I, I support that, but.
It's overflow, yeah.
It's an overflow, uh, we, you know, we know we will have to shut it down, which we actually do.
It's a totally stop.
We do have to shut it down, but first, we're already sealed, so we will have to shut it down, but, uh, yeah, we didn't feel like it was, we didn't want to.
Yeah. Right. Okay.
You don't wanna die on that though.
No, I was not, I wasn't asking for that.
Oh, I was just.
No, 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 I know, I, I, no, I know you were, I'm saying, no one wants to die on that though.
Yeah, I bet, right.
Just to, because did, did it, did our work, did they charge us for, yeah, did they charge us for, uh, the old, for graduation? So, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of good neighbor things that happen, and our intent for this, what I can tell you, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Dixon, all of the work that you put into, to do this, as close as Mr. Zeta. Um, we want to be good neighbors, we really wanted evaluating, like, how can we best support the programming that goes on? We all know that, uh, in our city, we have a very limited amount of field space, uh, for our students, uh, so when you factor in all the, uh, youth force that our students take part in, our fields are key cog in, in ensuring that happens, so. We wanna make sure we have enough funds to maintain those fields with joint use, uh, we also wanna make sure that with our city agreements that we're, uh, working hand in hand, and I feel like we appreciate, uh, Shapita and all of our, our, your staff, as we continue to talk about, uh, joint use, which we'll be bringing forward. Uh, sometime in the near future here to, to, for approval, um, but we made an agreement, and Jeff and I both agree, the, the lights are on until nine o'clock, and that's just for a safety issue at the high school. Um, you know, we have a lot of people that use that facility all the way up to that point in time, so we just, we need to be mindful that that's the time, and if it's available, let's make it available to the community at a price that makes sense, and not charge the electricity that we're already paying for the gas, it's really not good, good neighbor, so. Again, uh, it might not be the, our neighbors, they might not be, uh, super excited the lights will be on until nine, but, um, it is what, it's what we need to do, you know, uh, uh, so, and we are looking to, uh, as much as possible, increase usage of the theater. Uh, our, our outside career, so it was one of the things that I heard, uh, clear from our community when I walked in the door here, uh, was.
Back to how it was.
Good, let's get the theater back to the usage that, that, uh, we were able to do, um, and so we've, uh, worked through that, and Mr. Zeta and his staff, the, the calendar for the theater is now controlled out of our offices. Um, we will work to staff it, uh, with Mr. Roche, we'll make sure that doesn't impact any of what we have going on, uh, while at the same time, understand we're not just building sets, like set designs that we used to, um, so we don't have to close theater for two months to build sets. We are aging an outside firm to build them, bring them in, install them, so the turnaround is much, much quicker, and as such, we should be able to open up our theaters, uh, more than in past years, so. Again, we know we bumped some road, probably was, but we're, we're happy at least to just make this step forward, um, uh, one, like, for the community, and, and, and so.
And these fees will, will help also, I mean, because we are doing some upgrades over there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and so th- these fees are supposed to go, they're growing.
Yeah, the capital costs are included in the calculation.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes.
I'll take your time.
We got it.
Yeah, okay, it's good.
Any other discussions? On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, thank you. Action item twenty-eight, approval disposal of district surplus property.
President Dickerson, this is the same company we've been using for the past few years, when we have unused or unaligned educational material supplied or equipment with a value of less than twenty-five hundred dollars. Contract with TLC auctions to auction that equipment off or recycle it, and whatever, we get a portion after, it's very minimal, doesn't amount to much to us, but that's what our, our house organizes.
Holy comment? Or questions?
So is it mostly old computers or desks or around?
We use a separate company for the computers due to the erase and, uh, department of scrubbing the hard drives, so they can do that, but our IT department, um, wasn't comfortable with their way of signing off on that, so this is mostly old desks, uh, metal, and, uh. Uh, the TVs, anything's on an actual hard drive.
And where does this auctioning out?
It's taken off-site, uh, and there, we don't often.
It's a bit of a.
Remember your narati, they have it in their.
Work, yeah, professional workers.
Old TVs, I think.
Oh, big one, yeah.
I'm going in a new direction for your territory, that's still, I get it.
Two TVs.
Motion please, so, second. Any discussion? This, is it the one I told them about last day?
This is the one that they're suggesting, yeah.
Because they were just gonna like, uh.
Just give it away, they're, so I suggest that they can call you, I don't know if they ever did.
Just give it away.
Not yet, but we have the, the proof of it.
I think the coordinator was criticizing their way of doing it, I was just saying, we just, we need some money off of it, right?
Yeah. Shoot.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah.
They might sometimes.
So that's.
So they'll even take things away of no value, points, as long as you have things with value.
I mean, that's, I have very much.
The C C A stuff is not so much computers as physical stuff.
Right, right.
Now that they're trying to, and talk about it, they're not a warehouse. Well, we can just imagine.
We don't need to know.
Okay. And they do hold those.
Any other discussion? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five votes. Action item twenty nine, approval independent contract agreement for Chris McPhee.
Yeah.
In an amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred ninety two.
I can do it, but I think Dr. Warrior would be more particular.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm not sure about that. Chris McPhee, I actually utilized him the last two years to do our staff, uh, what we did last year.
Does that, does that, does that?
Yeah, we just, and it's a lot of, this, this, I think, we're having something a little, like more on air conditioning this year. Last year, but hey, I gotta say, this group was competitive. So, uh, Chris does a fantastic job, uh, he and I, and actually Toria, uh, we're in constant contact just about, uh, the different events that they do. What's the purpose of the event? What are we currently working on as, in the district? How does he, uh, find a way to connect those? Uh, so I, I'm pleased, uh, we've been having a lot of good conversations about strengths and the work that we've been doing around StrengthsFinder. Uh, and how does he potentially utilize that information in developing and implementing, uh, our next activity for this next year? At the same time, this isn't an increase from, uh, last year, and the reason is, uh, one of the things I would, uh, wanting to do in conjunction with Chris and, and other outside folks is to develop a, a leadership strand throughout the year for our leadership meetings. So, uh, Chris is going to come and facilitate some of those meetings as well, uh, so that I also get to be a part of the learning. Um, and I have time to lead as well, so he and I have talked about that. And, uh, so this contract actually says the sixteen and seventeen, um, there are other hours that will be included in this, that are already included. Doesn't spell it out that way, throughout the rest of the year, two hours here and there for leadership meetings that we have scheduled already. Uh, that will be for, uh, working months, we've developed a scope and sequence of what we want to do, uh, some leadership skills, so. So that's what he is, uh, working on. So again, uh, this group's all invited to the, those dates, we're gonna do, uh, the big work event on the seventeenth, so.
And it will be indoors.
It will be indoors, I promise.
Other comment? For the questions? Motion for a second.
That was a draw.
Whichever way you want.
Okay, so this, how? How many folks on your, is it your team, your whole?
It's the leadership team as a whole, so you're, uh, about thirty plus.
The leadership team, so it's seven, it's all thirty five.
Yeah, it's about thirty plus.
Invite principals and.
So it's, uh, assistant principals, uh, school psychologists also attend, uh, which we added in this last year. The, uh, classified management, um, confidential's, so.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that he's coming during the year, because I think as much as Lisa appreciated not having to guide the negotiations with the I E B, having those people here to facilitate, having a facilitator does allow you that opportunity to participate. Whereas, because I think that's really important, that, that everybody gets their, everybody needs that.
Right.
So.
I appreciate that. He's been great, I mean, he is, we've talked, and on stock, we're planning for this, and he's, you know, done some work and came across, uh, another person that, that, it's interesting how all these folks work together, because they're all, all in the C P tours. And so he was resourcing with other people that he knows, identifying some modules, calling us back, talking us through it, and then telling us, I don't want to leave you hanging, I really don't think that's a good fit. But I want to tell you about, you know, at least what I've done, and here's another direction that we're working, so he's been doing all this work in, in behind the scenes and, uh.
It's a newer type of responsibility.
He is, he is, yeah, so I appreciate it.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other discussions? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five votes. Action item thirty, approval agreement with Learning Together Strength Academy for a one-day Gallup Strengths Workshop on August twenty third, twenty eighteen, in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars.
Yeah, we need, uh, this is, uh, again, something that staff and I have been talking about related to, how do the strengths that we all learned about, uh, many of us, about ourselves? How does that then probably add in the classroom for students? And how do, how do teachers utilize those strengths? Uh, so this is, uh, what I believe would be the next step in the journey. This is where we will actually be partnering with Gallup themselves, uh, and they will be sending out one of their trainers. Learning Together is a facility agency within this, uh, cause there's also a little piece that they'll be doing, uh, at the end as a wrap-up. As we look into kind of again, next steps for really making it happen in the classroom. Gallup has very strict rules related to how many people can attend these sessions. Um, if you were to have this session in the public sector, it would be probably three times the amount. They do have an educational discount that's about a third of what they charge. So I'm really excited, cause I think it gives us that chance to do a little bit more, look at yourselves and your strength, that's a little bit of the morning session. And then really the focus is, okay, so now that you remember how your strengths work and what it looks like for you as you're working, now how do you then work with your students specifically in that area? So again, look, coming at our students for a positive list, not a deficit one, but a positive one, so.
Other comment? Or questions?
So this is, first, thank you for creating this and bringing it here. And this is for a teacher, for the teachers to look.
The folks will be for teachers.
Which are your, what's yours?
So we're working on the list, um, uh, as, I could be very thankful, we always get more people that are on the list than we have spots for. Uh, so we're gonna have to work to, uh, the twenty, I kind of work. We want to make sure we ask representation from those who are interested. Uh, we know that there's a lot of interest at elementary school, um, and, um, whole school sites, we've got some interest. Thurston, because they're so into it and so far along, we, we know they'll be interested there. And then trying to identify potential couple of folks at the high school level. Uh, they haven't done strengths yet, so it's not as, it's new to them, but trying to strengthen it, I wonder if we will have to start that on the site as well.
And will they do the strengths, who are those teachers, will they do the strengths before they?
Yeah, that's, that would be, yeah, so. And then the elementary stuff, you approved a contract already previously, that, that they'll go over and, and cover world getting that as a part of their kickoff. Those that would be coming to this would just need to do their strengths early, so that they would have, be prepared for that.
Either one of yous, either Gallup's, they've always communicated with us.
The Learning Together is facilitated, yeah, so.
And is that what you're saying, Kristen?
No, so Mike, I've been working with Mike, this is, uh, a, the handpicked person from Gallup that he said this is.
Did you lay in mostly?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so we've been working together last month to get, make sure that she was available, this is a date that we were looking for. Mike will also be there, because he's gonna facilitate the post portion with, uh, after she finishes that. Trying to talk to me about what support, uh, do teachers need ongoing wise, uh, to continue this conversation in their classrooms? So that's what, it's, it's a lot of our learning experience from Mike as well, cause he wants to hear, what are those things that teachers could utilize? Uh, they don't need to be lesson plans, it's a thought process, so what are the tools, uh, that, uh, everyone might use in that? Uh, I also, uh, not to, I, I believe this would be a, a great opportunity for sort of classified stuff too, uh, who've been trained in this work, because it's not just teachers that are using strengths. Uh, so we'll, we'll be sure to, have access to, to share our strengths, please, um, trying to get that balance of, of spots available.
And what you were coming in on was a discount, that's the list price and the sale price? On that, on that.
I think it's actually even higher than that in my initial conversations with them, yeah.
It's a good discount.
Well, yeah, when I initially talked to them about the strengths coaching work, um, I think individually, uh, they had told me it was, uh, forty five thousand, fifty thousand dollars to have them come and do strengths coaching for fifteen people. And the educational discount was much, much less, so, uh, but still, as I told them, it's still extorted for most districts to be able to afford that.
So, um, how does this work money-wise comparing to go, compared to going to their Gallup conference?
The Gallup conference doesn't do this work. Uh, the Gallup conference, uh, is more of a, uh, over, kind of overall with little workshops attached. This is, uh, the intent of this is more online, it's almost like a certification. So what we're looking towards, what, uh, and I, I try to, try to involve myself to be on the front lines of districts, I think we should be setting the standard for this. Is creating an opportunity for our teachers to become strength coaches for kids. And they have a lot of strengths coaches, uh, that are certif, certified by Gallup for adults. And it's actually a certification that you can get and, uh, and coach people, and you pay for it, actually. That's not the intent of what we're looking for, and Gallup is trying to change their model to adapt it to schools. So this would be step one of this conversation and kind of moving forward. And the out of, yeah, these same people may meet, who may visit then again in the spring, or maybe in the summer of next year, uh, as another day two. Uh, trying that out, because, uh, with Gallup being behind it, they can pull out a power in that, and they're just a more entity. Um, and then Learning Together folks, the ones who really understand what it takes inside a school setting to apply this knowledge, Gallup is more business model, so. They've, uh, this partnership has been beneficial for us as a school district, uh, to the proud members of that.
I think that's fabulous, that you working together and they get, you know, take advantage of each other.
I, actually, I noticed it in classrooms, uh, at least one, I'm sure, at Thurston Open House, where they had it slayed on the wall, they had their strengths, and what they'd done with it in that classroom, and it was really interesting, we think that the, that they were applying it there with the students. To, to start to realize at that young age, what they had to strengthen, and then how it related to others, and they were also different. So.
Yes.
It was nice to see, and I hope we can get some in high school. I mean, not more students and teachers does have those exercises.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five votes. Action item thirty one, approval of amended employment contracts for the Assistant Superintendent of Business, Human Resources, and Public Communications and Instructional Services. Glory?
Uh, I hurried forward tonight, um, provisions, it wasn't so long ago, I think it were since January, I think, but at least it was a group. And, uh, simply, uh, via amendments, will add, uh, initial year to their contract, so it, it'll be a three-year contract. Uh, as well as, uh, which is already agreed to their sound consent. So I am just appreciative that, uh, again, uh, the board directed me, uh, to bring this forward. Uh, it looks strongly in our team. I mean, it's just, uh, it's a reinforcement from myself and from the board, uh, the amazing work that they do.
Other comment? For questions? Motion? Second. Round discussion.
Yay. After this. And this is what I read this, a little chapter, okay?
I'm sorry, yes, correct.
This place for question? This is a roll report, it's, it's, I do this. Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision C three states, if prior to taking final action on executive compensation, the board must orally summarize the recommendation for final action on, on the salary compensation. And or fringe benefits that will be considered for certain executive officers in the district. The proposed contract for the renewed employment of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Public Communications, Lisa Winston. Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Jeff Dixon. And Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, Alicia Adico, were posted with the board agenda for this meeting, along with the recommended motion that the board approve the amendments to the employment agreements. And renewed appointment of these individuals for term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. On behalf of this board, I will provide a summary of the compensation and fringe benefit provisions in the proposed contract. After public comment, this board will consider and take action on the item. The proposed contract amendments provide the following provisions, which may qualify as compensation, salary, or fringe benefits. The proposed contract is subject to the same annual increases as approved by the board for the district's other employee groups. This includes a two percent on salaries, on schedule salary increase and a one point five percent off schedule one-time payment. So we take public comment again, aye?
Very good.
Public comment? And now we vote. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five votes. Action item thirty two, approval employment contract for the superintendent.
And that's me.
So as presented, we are having the amendment to, uh, Dr. Glory's contract, uh, the one extends the contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. I need to read the terms and get some shit read, and now that it's already been written. Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision C three states, if prior to taking final action on executive compensation, the board must orally summarize the recommendation for final action on the salary compensation and or fringe benefits. That will be considered for certain executive officers in the district. The proposed contract for the renewed employment of Superintendent Jason Gloria was posted with the board agenda for this meeting, along with the recommended motion that the board approve the amendment to the employment agreement and renewed appointment of the superintendent for term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. On behalf of this board, I will provide a summary of the compensation and fringe benefit provisions in the proposed contract. After public comment, this board will consider and take action on the item. The proposed contract amendments provides following provisions, which may qualify as compensation, salary, or fringe benefits. The proposed contract is subject to the same annual increases as approved by the board for the district's other employee groups. This includes a two percent on schedule salary increase and a one point five percent off schedule one-time payment. Other comment? Other questions?
Do you have any questions? Question, what's your? Are, are they? Sales, the sales store. Motion? So.
Any discussion? Yeah, there you stand. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five votes. Action item thirty three, board paper request, I have to keep the meetings, request for information or general comments?
Uh, my general comments are, I really enjoyed the fifth grade promotions, the eighth grade promotion, and the graduation. I wanted to thank all the staff and all the parents, I'm sure a lot of parents helped with things. Um, my cheeks hurt from smiling, so what a great day to have that. Um, I also enjoyed the barbecue, particularly the tissue paper campfire in the center, the table. I want to note that for the record, please, um, cause it was really creative. Um, but just thanks for all the end of the year stuff, cause I know it's so much work on behalf of staff. And also, I wanted to just take the time to thank the staff for the work on the calendar. Um, I know it's a lot of work, um, I was on the calendar committee, so I have a lot of pride in it, but you guys keep following up and doing the F A Qs and reading letters and addressing that, so I'm really appreciative of that. Thank you.
Um, did, and I really, I loved the counselor, um, shirts, and I thought it was great. And, um, and the fact that you guys were all there, um, giving to employees and disturbing them and welcoming them and everything, my job was really, it was me, I kind of felt like we should have been there with you. Uh, or was I should, not you, I did it all the time. And so I just, I, I felt appreciated, so it was nice to spend time with employees. And it's just, I think you guys, we kept Justin working for a while. Um, and, and then thanks for, um, like always looking at the system, that I picture, standards, processes, and, and really asking others to do the same when they approach you. I just, I really appreciate it, and I like, I just really, you're inclusive, and just to, even, even about, like looking for ways, and, and really appreciate you. But you all, that idea. And having, for the, the, the holes, if you continue to scale. And the graduations and the promotions are all. Good that we made it said, I'm honored, I'd like to thank you for inviting us, um, giving, or inviting us all to your, and the barbecue, your, your festivities as well, I always appreciate it. And our keeps. Um, and I would also like to publicly thank the calendar committee for all the hard work that you all put in there. And I want you to know that simply because we have discussion and need to bring it back for an information item, again, does not mean anybody is missing anything that you all have done, have, have proposed. It's simply that our due diligence requires us to approach everything from all angles. We will get to a good place. We will get to a good place, um, I think we'll get to a very good place. But I just, I, I want the committee to know that simply because there are questions and, and I won't even call them concerns, um, it doesn't mean that, that we felt that your work was not, um, appreciated.
I can't get to that, sorry.
Yeah, well said.
Yeah, that's, well said, and, and I think that the comments, I think sometimes like visually, like about the calendar, like seeing those different things, with like, I know you guys were really small and everyone, but I think maybe for us just seeing what the different options look like as this, we're saying, it's important, and it doesn't mean we don't go back to the recommendations or we don't. I think it's just that we can see we all stand for, and so forth.
Oh, and I'm gonna say thank you to Karen for the community report.
Oh, yeah, that was great.
It was, that was, that was great.
Excellent job.
Sorry, I had that scribbled in the middle of some stuff.
And me never wrote that down.
That was, it was, it was absolutely top notch. So thank you.
It was kawasi.
Kawasi, world of. Welcome to Sarah, I'm glad to have Martha back. Um, dito about graduation, I, all the gradu- promotions and graduations, I love seeing the excitement of our students going out into the world. It makes me feel better about the direction the world goes, even with, even with positive attitudes and that energy to take it on. Um, and thank you, Dr. Gloria, for giving us the list of what students were also taking in community college. I mean, I saw it, it was an introduction to psychology, it was a big favorite, and then what did you have, Chinese, and then sign language? Anyway, that was, I thought that was helpful, but a lot of them were just one, 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 one. So it's meeting a variety of interests that we can't meet at the high school. Uh, I did go see the high school mental health place, I know Dr. Glory was there for a while, I thought they were excellent. And I invited some other people to come, like, uh, I brought Marsha, Marsha Bedneck, because she was really happy because she said she has to deal with, so, she's from the hospital and deal with so many negative aspects of teenagers and health and drug issues that just made her happy to see kids doing such positive things. And, and I invited a woman, uh, from Chalk Hospital, but she wasn't able to come, kind of invited her last minute. But, uh, it, you know, afterwards, thinking about approaching those tough issues, but in a way that is sensitive, in a way that isn't stereotypical, it, it would be really hard, really tough, so it was well done, you know, very positive. That's it.
I think hearing all of you comment about all the work that is done at the end of the year, all these celebrations, but also the work that's done to prepare for next year with L cap and budget, that I feel is part of our responsibility to make sure that we can get that message out to parents and community members. Because I don't think that they really realize how much work, because it's, when you look at the federal government keeping something back to the state, because everything, there's so much paperwork, you don't have short and succinct reports, you have lengthy reports. And so it's, there, it takes a lot of time to get all that done. And then we have also some, several facilities, I know people compliment on the facilities side, and I think that's a real high mark for a district because they are clean and well taken care of and well maintained, and that affects, that affects everyone's attitude toward the education students get. So I'm just, I just always try to share that with people so that they understand that there's, there's a lot behind the scenes that's done, a lot of work, all, not just what happens in the classroom, what makes that possible. Um, I'm glad that we continued that barbecue. We started that in the time that it was, when the district was coming out of some really, really tough years. And we wanted to say to our employees how much we value them, and I just think it's been very popular, the same with the holiday buffet in December. Uh, it's important to continue those, and, and again, they're not, there, there's a cost attached, but I think it's always, there's a benefit that far outweighs that in, as Carol mentioned, to have everyone involved and, and instead of serving, cooking and serving, it's just, it's so relaxed and it's, I think it's, um, a, a, a great plus for our employees. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, it's, it's so busy at the end of the year.
I thought, and I also wanted, in the spirit of how we try, maybe that can really help, maybe how we try so hard to make changes and how hard it is to make change. I thought, I loved it when Jenny asked the starter, because she called it a graduation. Because that was so ingrained for so long, and we made that, we tried to make that really attempt that you only graduate at the end, and so we changed, and it's hard, it's still in there and you're so conscious. Uh, I thought that was terrific. Corrected that. Uh, you know, when I noticed about graduation, and maybe unsure all of the rest of you did, because the kids put up with a lot of all the handshaking, and I'm sure they make eye contact, you know, I don't think there was any student that came across the stage that didn't make eye contact and they, and they, they're saying thank you. It wasn't, it wasn't rote, they are being thankful for their, you know, education. And I don't know whether that's because a lot of our kids go through kindergarten to twelfth grade year. I mean, I don't know what the percentage of that is, I think it's pretty high, so they have such connection, they have such connection with the schools and the people that have, um, been invested in them. So I just, I, I take a lot of pleasure in that.
That, that makes me think of something else, Kate Hawkins' book, and I got to see that in Thurston. And one, um, the substitute teacher that was there, and they, and they're both, she didn't know who I was, I was a fellow teacher or parent or something. And he just said, he's most respectful students, they're meant to really care, there's some parents here, because they were helping out in our team, and she's scribbled. And then not long after that, Mr. Hawkins went, he turned older and respectful later, but then he's a positive whole thing. He said, what I do know to be true, he had three things he knew to be true, so he said the first thing, the other one was, I'm gonna stand here for hours with you, lecture you, you don't know me, and then you're gonna clap for me. Those teachers, they do that every day, you've never clapped for them, and the kids all were, oh. And the fact that they're made by it, and you know, it's, of course, I gratitude, but the same, I think, in that, so.
Well, then we need to have, um, okay, that's, our next very good meeting is on Tuesday, July seventeenth. There's a request that we start the meeting, not the closed session, but the meeting at five, because Dr. Glory needs to go to.
Oh, it's always about him.
Sure.
Well, a lot of people want to go right there, so if it doesn't, ew, or tired.
Yeah, I must do that.
Where is that?
Is that one right?
No.
One right. So it's our session two. We're good today?
We won't know that that far, but it's, but it'll be intentional.
Right, and if we need it, I think what we did last time was we said we can have it afterwards and we would just miss it.
You're always adjourned to close session.
Are we gonna adjourn to close session, or are we gonna adjourn during the meeting? So is that agreeable?
Yeah. Yes, but with, but it's gonna have to worry changing.
She will do that, she's. So that, we will be adding that meeting on Tuesday, July seventeenth at five PM in the boardroom. We also have our special meeting this Thursday, Thursday, June twenty-eighth, at eight thirty. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, great.